All right, good evening, everybody. I called this meeting of the Prosper Independent School District to order, let the record show that a quorum of board members is present. That this meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 5, 5, 1. Mr. Beavers, will you lead us in the invocation, please?
Absolutely. Pray with me, please. Father, we thank you for this day and just this time that we can come together this evening, Lord, and lay out just everything that's going on in Prosper ISD. And Father, right now, we thank you so much that we live in a country that is free, that we can come together and, Father, and talk and disagree and just look at different situations, Lord. And thank you so much for allowing us that freedom. Lord, and thank you so much for Prosper ISD, all it's doing for our students, Lord, just the many different amazing things that are going on here, Lord. We thank you for that. This evening, we pray for wisdom and discernment as we look at the different situations before us. And it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please raise for the bride and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
Our enrollment update, our current numbers are 21,536 Prosper ISD. Just as a reminder, our projected enrollment is 21,700 students. So we are well on our way to making projected enrollment. Construction update, obviously, we have elementary school number 15, which is located in the subdivision of Star Trail. And you can see that we're beginning to make progress on that, even with some of the challenges that we have with building materials and those types of things to get that project underway. You can see there. And then high school three, which we all know as Walnut Grove High School, home of the Wildcats. And you can see that we're also making headway. And if you drive by that area on First Street, you will see our construction team out there working steadily. Because 600,000 square feet of a school building will be there soon enough, at least by 2024, right? Okay, any questions about the construction or enrollment? At this time, we actually have a student leadership summit presentation. I'm so excited for this to come. Mrs. Kane came to me and said, I would like for us to host a leadership summit in Prosper ISD for our students. And so she told me about what her vision was and really what she was wanting to see. And of course, my question was, how much does it cost? And so she went on a journey to go see the Prosper Education Foundation, who is a huge supporter of ours, and said, yes, we'll make that happen. And so I think she has some students with her today that might be able to share what they did this summer.
I do, thank you, Dr. Ferguson, yes. I tend to get excited about cool experiences for our kiddos. And I had the opportunity to go to Davos, Switzerland, to the International Leadership Summit as a part of a trip with some of our students a few summers ago. And I thought, oh, my gosh, this fits our strategic plan, it fits our graduate profile, we need to be doing this. And of course, Dr. Ferguson was like, yes, absolutely. And so I went and talked to Prosper Education Foundation and was so thankful. They were absolutely so supportive and funded it. And we have enough money to fund next year, so this coming years. And so we're really excited about continuing that. I want to tell you a little bit about the day. We actually, my hope was to have about 125 to 150 kiddos. I thought that's a pretty good starting number. We had 190, and I turned away probably another 70 or 80. And so that was absolutely amazing. Elizabeth Johnston, when they came and kind of watched it, she said, okay, next year, we're going to have 500. I was like, okay, slow the roll. Manageable numbers, manageable numbers. But we had, so we had about 190 students, we had 12 junior staffers. And these were high school students who asked to be a part in a leadership role, and they were recommended by their principals. Then we also had 26 staff members that donated their time. And just came in and said, you know, I'm committed to helping our students grow. One of the most amazing things that I think I got to see as a part of that was that many of our staff members that came up were elementary teachers. And the leadership summit is for secondary students. And so it was amazing listening to them at the end, talk about what they learned from working with older students that they're going to be able to take back into their classroom, in addition to things that they learned at the summit. And so that was absolutely incredible. So we had three days. The first day, Dr. Ferguson came, and she talked to the kiddos about the importance of listening, learning, and leading. Then we had our PISD graduate Avery Bishop, who, if you ever knew Avery, was absolutely one of the most amazing children I've ever met in my life. She is currently an SMU Law student and was the reigning Miss Dallas, she may still be the reigning Miss Dallas, and was first runner-up at the Miss Texas Pageant the year before COVID hit. So she came and talked to the kids about the importance of empathy and curiosity in leadership. Then we had our PISD Police Department Sergeant Watson and Officer Jackson Kane, and talked about the importance of connecting beyond technology and how Disney teaches us about how to be good leaders. Then we had a special guest that we brought in from Generation Leadership, which was Eric Jackson. And I think you'll hear from the kiddos, he was absolutely incredible. And he talked about knowing what your leadership legacy is going to be and making sure that your leadership legacy is something that you're thinking through every day and deciding in everything that you say and everything that you do, what that is going to leave as your legacy. And he taught the kids about the importance of the platinum rule instead of the golden rule, that instead of treating others as you want to be treated, to treat others as they want to be treated. Because when we do the golden rule, we're assuming that you want to be treated like me. And all of us have our own personal feelings and thoughts. And so treating other people the way they wish to be treated. And so it was amazing, it was quite exciting. In addition, the students learned about what design thinking was. And they did groups, they broke into groups. And we gave them no barriers other than find something that you feel needs to be fixed within Prosper ISD or the community of Prosper, and tell me how you're going to fix it. And so we had 21 groups, so we had 21 different ideas. I was kind of worried, I was like, we're going to have the same, like, 10, like, school dress code, right? But we didn't, we had 21 different ones. And so then the kids voted, and they voted on the one that they felt was most empowering. And you're going to hear from that presentation here in just a minute. But first, I want to introduce a few of the kiddos that are going to talk to you. First of all, we have Hannah, who is from, you know, way. Hannah is from Rushing, she's in sixth grade. Then we have Tatum, who's in sixth grade at Reynolds. We have Disha, who is in seventh grade at Rushing, and Lauren, who's in sixth grade at Rushing. Then we also have our junior staffer, which is Isabella, and Isabella is a senior at PHS. So I'm going to have, three of the kiddos are going to come tell you just very briefly something that they learned at the summit. And then we're going to have Isabella speak, and then you'll hear their presentation. All right, Tatum, you want to go first?
First of all, that was a, the few days that we went there, that was a really long time. Well, it felt like that because we did a lot of stuff. So there's a lot of different things that we learned, but one important thing that we learned was, like, how to be a good leader, how, like, how to make good decisions, and like, how to, like, how to treat other people, or, yeah.
So I'm Lauren, and one thing that I really took away from Leadership Camp was how to look in the eyes of how to be a leader and how to just kind of get your confidence up and kind of just, you know, have self-confidence in order to be a leader. But it's not only self-confidence, it's also the struggle of being a leader too, and how you can figure out just kind of how to push through and how to help other people, look at other people's perspectives. And I really found that something really powerful from Leadership Camp that I really liked about it, so, yeah.
Hi. My name is Disha, and one thing that I learned from Leadership Camp was about empathy and stuff. Because you have to be a nice person if you're going to be a good leader, or else no one's going to want to listen to you, because they won't like you. And, yeah.
Hello, I'm Isabella, I'm a senior at Prosper High School, and I was a junior staffer. I had the absolute joy of working with these mixed bag of children. And I honestly really took away from the summit how to handle such a variety of people. Because if anybody's shamelessly themselves, it's young children. And it really helped me understand how different personalities work together and how I can best help coordinate their work to the maximum potential that they can have. I absolutely loved working with them, and it was a very impactful and powerful experience.
So I just wanted to give you a few comments that the kiddos said that I thought was empowering. One of the things that I asked at the evaluation at the end were, what are some of the things that you have learned? And they said, I'm planning on owning the leader in myself and to stop being afraid of it. I learned that in groups, my input is valuable. I learned to step up to take on leadership when I usually shy away from it. And I'm going to, a teacher said, I'm going to use design thinking process in my lessons and try to implement some of the leadership materials that I learned from our presenters. And then being mindful of the communication that I put off towards others more consistently. So it was absolutely incredible. So now at this time, we're going to have the kiddos come, and like I said, they all did different presentations, and we had incredible ones. We had how to be, we want it to be a litter-free prosper, out with the old, in with the new, a stress-relieving patch. I would sign up for that every day of the week, I'm just saying. We had club and sports awareness, cultural and special interests in Prosper, are you ready for the real world? Decreasing anxiety in new and existing students, disaster response, vape and motion detectors, the issues behind traditional seating. So you can see, these kids were thinking of things that were far beyond what you'd think the average middle school kiddo is going to think about. They really put some time and thought into it. They really put some time and thought into it. So at the end, they all voted and this team won. And their presentation is Prosper Peers. So I'm going to have them come on up.
Hi, I'm Hannah Nelson and we're Prosper Peers. So Prosper Peers is basically when students come from out of state, country, or simply out of town. They can feel slightly isolated in a sea of new people and unknown faces. And with Prosper ISD growing exponentially, we're going to, Prosper Peers is trying to help incoming students feel more included and welcome to the district. So in the 2007 to 2008 school year, two thou, about 2,800 people were in Prosper ISD. And then last year, in the 2020 to 2021 school district, there's now, there was about 19,517 people.
In this modernized and disconnected world, we are determined to grow and promote inclusivity, inclusivity through technology. Prosper Peers will make it easier and more accessible to bridge the gap between new and current students while creating stronger connections.
How it works, when opening the Prosper ISD app, you'll sign in with your student ID. After that, you can choose one of two options. You can choose to be a buddy or you can sign up for one. Either way, you take the quiz that matches your interest. After you get paired up by the council, you both go into their office before or after school. Then you hypothetically become buddies forever. Students at Prosper ISD can become peers in several, in several different ways. First, you need a teacher recommendation. Second, you can sign up for an interview utilizing your student ID. The interview process serves to make sure that you are committed towards helping new students.
Love it.
Thank you for considering Prosper Peers.
I want to thank the board for supporting such an endeavor. Thank you, Dr. Ferguson, for seeing my vision and allowing me to go forward. And thank you to Prosper Education Foundation for funding it. Otherwise, we couldn't have had it. And it's something that I, we're looking forward to doing year and year again as we build student leaders across the district. Thank you very much.
Okay, now we come to a part of our meeting for public comment. Now, as you know, last month, we started to separate public comment to those items that are on the agenda and items that are not on the agenda. We want to hear from citizens, particularly with items as they're related to the agenda, because that gives us an opportunity to take that feedback in as we make decisions. We want to hear all the other items, but we can hear those before we go into closed session. So the good news is, the meeting should not be very long. There's not a lot on the agenda tonight. The bad news is, we don't have anybody that signed up for a specific agenda item. So if you'd like to think about what item you want to sign up to, please let me know. While I read, think about that while I read this long preamble, yes? You put, okay. I don't think we have a budget conversation tonight. Do we? Other than the, maybe amendments, we have amendments? Amendments, okay, okay. Well, that makes sense then. But for the rest of you, if you want to think about what you'd like to, if there's a specific agenda item, otherwise, we'll give you a chance to talk right before we go into executive session, fair? Okay, so here's the, here's the preamble. All public comments at a regularly scheduled meeting should be limited to school, district governance and operations. If you have a specific concern related to an employee, the district, or a specific student, you're encouraged to utilize the district's grievance procedures provided in board policies, FNG, DGBA, or GF Local. Please note that the board will not respond to comments or questions raised during public comment. Pursuant to Prosper ISD Board Policy BED Local, audience participation in a board meeting is limited to the portion of the meeting designated to receive public comment in accordance with that policy. At all other times during a board meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussion or debate on matters being considered by the board. When necessary for effective meeting management or accommodate larger numbers of individuals wishing to address the board, the presiding officer may make adjustments to public comment procedures, including establishing an overall time limit for public comment and adjusting the time allotted to each speaker. However, no individual should be given less than one minute to make comments. We have five people signed up, so we will do three minutes per, per speaker. Let's see, excuse that. Yeah, so here's the, here's the part about the agenda. Please note there will be two time slots for public comment this evening. We will hear comments related to the items on the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, while comments about a topic not on the agenda will be heard toward the end of the meeting. Please also note that if you begin to speak about an item that is not on the agenda during the public comment time for agenda items, I will ask you to stop speaking and wait until the non-agenda time for comments. Finally, I think it's important to address the board's expectations and hopes and dreams and aspirations for decorum during this public comment time. While the board certainly encourages members of our community to speak about any school governance or operations topic during public comment, and while we know, absolutely know, that no one approaches the board unless they care deeply and passionately about the matter they bring before us, we ask that each member, each speaker, conduct him or herself in a polite and civil way while addressing the board. The board will show each speaker courtesy and respect while he or she is speaking. And we simply ask that each speaker show the same to the board. Should any speaker disregard this request and become a disruption to our public meeting, I'll be forced to prematurely end that speaker's time at the podium. Additionally, should any audience member or group of audience members become a disruption to our public meeting, I will be forced to remove that person or group from the meeting. Thank you in advance for observing these expectations. And the Board of Trustees appreciates your active participation in the school district. And we truly, truly do. We're grateful that people have taken the time to come speak to us. So with that said, Janelle Davis, did you have a specific agenda item? Okay, sure. Okay, I don't think it will be long, if you want to stay.
I've got three kids, they've got to go to school in the morning, so. My name is Janelle Davis and I, I'm here to speak as a concerned parent and as a representative of the Prosper Citizens Group PAC. As you're aware, the PAC has now sent two letters asking for clarification and information regarding several issues that came up during last month's board meeting, including specifically budget questions and the district's use of federal funds and its spending of those funds on cultural responsiveness training for our teachers. This board's only response has been to direct us to submit an open records request for the answers and information we requested. Several open records requests have already been sent to the district by different parents. And thus far, the district has provided nothing of substance in response. We're trying very hard to have a collaborative relationship with this board to make this district better. But as a whole, you have refused to engage with the voters who elected you to the seats that you sit in today. So on behalf of the PAC and its members and supporters, I would like to ask you for a third time to please provide the information requested in our August 29th letter to this board. We would like two-way communication and collaboration, but this cannot happen when you refuse to engage. In addition, it has recently been reported that the PISD budget will include nearly half a million dollars in federal funds from the American Rescue Plan. This plan requires that at least 20% of the funds be spent on social and emotional learning, including anti-racist therapy for white educators. We would appreciate information from the board regarding how these funds are going to be used, including, including whether any of the funds have to be or will be used for anti-racist training for our white educators. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Shelley Creel, you've also indicated you want to speak about the budget? And thank you, Ms. Davis.
Hi, my name is Shelley Creel and my address is public record. Today, I'm asking questions about the budget. The school board has invested an exorbitant amount of money in cultural sensitivity. And today, there was a, Rock Hill Media sent via Instagram to Rock Hill students. There was a survey that was sent out asking what the students knew about CRT and about the bill that's up currently and what they think about the bill. If we truly are not teaching CRT, like I know you said we were not, then why is this part of our process? Why is our money being spent to send surveys to our students that parents have no idea is being sent out unless their students report it? My second question on the budget is, where, where is it in the budget? Does it address a larger issue within PISD and education in general on bullying? We have seen many parents and children come to you asking for help to address the bullying that goes on daily within the district. Bullying has caused my own kids to ask for help. But the actions that PISD does to correct bullying clearly is not working. I know that many times it is swept under the rug for the sake of keeping the district looking like it only has good PR. This is why also the PISD police force was brought in so that you didn't have to report it to the city numbers. We have seen hurtful things said, that's one thing. But when it starts to get physi, physical bullying that goes viral, hazing, which is actually sexual assault. And now an elementary student at Cockrell was molested, a little girl. The victim's parents were not notified by the principal and was only told about it after the daughter was having nightmares that came to her. The victim was moved to a new class while the offender is still in class. The poor girl must ask her friends to look around the corner to see if the student is coming because she's scared of him. Why was she moved to a new class? Why is the offender still in class?
We don't want to talk about any specific student incidents, okay?
I'm not going, I'm not, I'm not speaking to this, just as, as the person. I'm not asking for what the results are of this person.
So be very careful.
It's, it's a broader, it's a broader issue. When, at some point, you have to say, our students have to be protected. We're leaving the other girls in the classes at risk and dramatic changes need to be done to protect kids from bullying, hazing, and sexual misconduct.
Thank you, Ms. Creel, we appreciate your comments very much.
More than the image of Prosper ISD.
Thank you, Ms. Creel. Thank you very much. James Pope, do you have an agenda, specific agenda item? Can you, which one is it? Which one is which, I'm confused. Yeah, why don't you just, if you don't mind, yeah, because I don't, if you don't mind, I don't think those are on the, on the agenda for tonight. That's not missing it.
The only one is the remote home bound, but that's impersonal.
Yes, yes. Why don't you just wait, because we'll do that before we go into, because I hate to put you off, but trying to do it this way. We'll make sure we get you and you won't have to wait long. Dame Douglas? Okay, well, if you'd like to speak about that.
Okay, so I, I pulled my third grader from school, from Bryant Elementary, after last month, when y'all dismissed me about the budget question that I had. And I, I applied or sent in a request for public information about the cultural, cultural responsiveness company that is training our teachers. And I've gotten no response. And I, I didn't even get an email or anything from anybody about when I was asking about what us as parents can do to avoid taking more federal money. And I, and I just got an update that we are taking so much more. And because of all that, it's made me even lack trust in you guys even more. And I don't want that at all. And I really don't know what to, what to do about it and why no one has responded to my emails or called me about the, the training that's been going on with the teachers and everything. And the, and other things have been brought up tonight that I didn't include. I didn't run out of time, but I'm a parent and my, I matter. Like my, my voice matters and I think I should be responded to. And we have concerns. There was a lady up here earlier who was talking about Disney and appreciating those principles. And then talking about design thinking, which sounds a lot like brainwashing. I just looked it up. And then you just said that you were going to be nice and you're patronizingly laughing at.
I'm laughing at brainwashing, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, yeah, that's rude, that's.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay, thank you. I mean, you even prayed, right, Mr. Beavers, for wisdom and discernment? That wasn't very nice. So thank you for your apology. But I guess at the point in the juncture that we find ourselves at, I thank you for being so dismissive to me last week because so many people are learning how to file FOIA requests.
I'm sorry.
And are learning how to file FOIA requests. So sadly, you kind of showed us what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments, Ms. Douglas. Okay, we have two more that we'll get to after, when we get to the second part of, that's Mr. Pope and Sam Torino? Is that okay? Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's right, so we'll get you, we'll do, we'll do this whole thing again in a few minutes. Great, thank you. Okay.
The August 23rd meeting. Any questions about those minutes from the previous meeting?
None for me.
On that, when we get to consideration and possible action on any budget amendments that we have. And Ms. Fulmer actually has a couple of budget amendments. Anything you'd like to add about those, Ms. Fulmer? Just clean up to get the budget ready to close out for this cycle. Because we'll be obviously looking at our new budget for the upcoming school year.
Great. All right, any questions on either of those items? Then we need a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Kelly, all in favor? Okay.
Jump into education now. We have a class size waivers for our kindergarten through fourth grade classrooms. State law is 22 to 1. And when you're in the fastest growing district, you tend to have waivers just because it's hard to predict exactly how many numbers we're going to have in each of those grade levels. So I believe we have 36, sorry, total.
Do I have a question?
Yes.
I noticed in reviewing this document specifically that we have one classroom with 26 and another with 25. Those seem to be the largest classrooms. Have we, have we talked about a threshold of how many students? I know that anytime during the year, even as early as it is with our school year starting in August, it's never a good thing to upset students and their families and breaking up the classroom. But I'm just wondering, having lived in that world for a long time, how high will we go?
Some of that has to do with the age of the child. Because when you're looking at a first grader versus a fourth grader, there's a lot more independence that comes with that fourth grade child versus the first grade child. What we've done in the past, when we've seen those numbers get to that 25, 26 mark, will either hire another teacher, which is not always the best situation because you're pulling kids away from a relationship that they've already established. And that can somewhat be daunting for that child. And then also for the teacher who's letting the kids go, as well as the teacher who is receiving. Many times, though, we've handled it by hiring a paraprofessional just to help with the management, being able to do small groups and things like that within the classroom. So that way, they get to stay with the teacher that they were assigned to. But a lot of times, we'll see about that December, January time because we will get a lot of movement typically during that holiday break. And so a lot of times, we're having to make decisions to add a teacher, which is not always great because there's not always a lot of great options. You're usually looking at a brand new teacher. Not that there's anything wrong with that because many of us were brand new teachers, right? At one point in time. So we certainly want to give them a chance, but it is hard to step in. I will say, I was a teacher who stepped in in the middle of a school year. And it was a great challenge, but also challenging, right, for everyone involved, so.
But we're watching that.
Absolutely. Mr. Race and her team does a great job.
Great.
To the point of Ms. Thompson, it looks like though the large majority of these are 23 students. And it's, it's, I guess, a 22 to 1?
Yes.
The ratio, and the large majority of these are 23. It's interesting to see that, on the campus breakdown, that the majority of this is at Winsong.
Yes, it is. One of the fastest growing subdivisions in the state.
And this situation is quite common for growing.
It's very common. We've, we have to do this every year for the last, gosh, probably what? Five to eight years at least that we've been doing this. And we have about 15 more years of heavy growth ahead for Prosper ISD. So our demographer does a great job with this, but sometimes it's really hard. And I don't know why, but it always hits one grade level. Like it'll be, okay, every time a kid walks in, they're a first grader or they're a third grader, and it just kind of bulges in that area. We have in the past too, I believe when students were at Winsong, we actually took a third grade class at the time of January because those students would never go to Winsong. I think they were going to be transitioned over to Boyer. So we actually had them move to another school. So they just started school over there. And of course, we provided transportation. But they were never going to be assigned because of where their address was. And that helped with some of that growth and kind of leveling out. So we try to get as creative as we can. We certainly don't want our teachers drowning. And typically, the best thing to do is to get that paraprofessional to help out. So you've got another set of hands. Because the teachers, we've got awesome teachers and they don't want to lose their kids either and see them go.
Great. Any other comment or questions on 9A? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Jan. Second?
A second.
Thank you, Deana. All in favor?
Another thing, sorry, I probably need to add this. So we have about 600 kids that are sitting, asking and requesting for virtuals. So that will impact some of these numbers too. So that is a consideration we need to think about because those kids have not moved out of those numbers yet. And then we have a consideration and possible action on approval for a waiver for seventh grade reading diagnostics. So these are sixth grade students if they failed the state assessment. We'll need to do an assessment with them. And what we're asking is for MAP, which is the measure of academic progress, to be able to be used. That's an assessment that we use across the district for our students to really measure their progress and see where they are academically. Any questions about that?
Was that due to, to the COVID issues of last year? Does it have something to do with it?
So there was that. That was part of this last year. But COVID is really not the piece of it now as much because what we're trying to do is do assessments with kids that were sitting in a virtual world and then in in-person world. Right now, currently, all of our students that are in school are in an in-person world. So the MAP is the quickest, fastest way to get that diagnostic because they do that test on a computer to be able to find out exactly where they are. And then a lot of these that are listed here, it's going to be one teacher pulling one student at a time. And as we've talked about, STAR scores looks a little bit different in Prosper ISD than they have looked in the past. It was more predominantly in math than it was reading that we saw where kids were struggling more. So we're asking to be able to use MAP to do this waiver, to be able to use what we already have in place.
Great. Other questions on that? Does that make sense to you, Jan?
Yes, it does.
9B, all right, we'll take a motion for 9B.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Bill. Second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Jan. All in favor? Great. Okay, October 13th, is that right?
October 13th, yes, for the virtual learning to begin. So we have a approval, so we have a student. Every time, the way that, and Dr. Hickey can certainly fill in on this, but whenever we have a special education homebound student and they are requesting homebound services, the board has to take action. And that's for a general education student or a special education student. So it's just not myopic only to special education. But in this situation, it is a special education student. So we're, we need that actual, that approval to be able to move forward to provide that service. And certainly, the student is in need of those services for homebound. Dr. Hickey, is there anything that I missed on that?
Okay, great. I need a motion for that. Any questions or comments?
I have a question. So this would start immediately after we take action.
Actually, it doesn't require order.
It's just the waiver.
Got it.
So we'll get approval, submit to TEA, and then they'll take care of the academic piece of it through the R.
Perfect.
I'll make the motion to approve.
All right, thank you, Jan. You've been very busy with your motions tonight. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Kelly, thank you. All in favor? All right, pretty good.
Okay, and business. We'll have Ms. Fulmer come. She has a presentation for you on our budget.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm very excited to present the last financial report for 2021. What an amazing year. You're going to see, when we started the year, our budget looked very different than how it ended the year. We've come out with a favorable outcome. And we'll talk a little bit about that. And also, one thing to be aware of is these are interim financials. They're not audited yet. And so Ms. Sees and her team have already started preparing for audit. That'll occur October, November, and present the audit in December. So last year is very much still alive and well. We are working on it, but we're going to look at where we stand today. Our investment portfolio as of August 31st for all funds, we have $169 million invested. That includes the bond funds. That's a 21% decrease over August of last year. If we look at the general fund, 68% of that is reflected in the general fund with $115 million. Our benchmark performance for August 31st is .07 of 1%, but it's up from last month. I still see that as a win every time it just ticks up a little bit. We can get some more yield for operations. This also shows our financial institutions where we have our investments placed and the yield by investment. We do have one long-term fixed security there at Texas Term going out 234 days. The weighted average maturely for the total portfolio is eight days. It's not a whole lot, but that little bit extra length gives us a little bit more yield. Investment comparison by funds for total general fund only, $122 million this time last year, $115 million this year. You're going to see a very favorable revenue picture. This is cash. So the reason that that might change is we have receivable due from state that we've booked to revenue on our financials. If we look at our revenue by source for general fund, $188 million that we've booked as revenue year-to-date during the year when we do our monthlies, that's going to be on a cash basis. It's really at the end of the year where we really do the accruals in preparation for the audit. That's a 19% increase over this time last year. And if we look at the budgeted revenue, was $187 million. That's after the final budget amendment last month. When we adopted the budget, it was $178 million conservative budgeting. Our collected revenue, $188 million. Some of the things to remember when we swing back to last summer and when we adopted the revenue projection, we work conservative. We opened during COVID, we were unsure about ADA instructional method and lots of things that might impact our revenue. So we really did try to be conservative. We also received the ADA hold harmless funds from TEA. We just got that word last week that our revenue, they bumped up our ADA for last year more than what our actual showed because of the statewide ADA suppression.
And just more, we were one of the only districts that benefited from that, correct? Because I think other districts were not wanting that because they had declining enrollment.
Right.
It was really a lifeline for almost every other district in the state of Texas that truly lost enrollment and all their special populations, their free and reduced numbers went down because no one was serving. And those are tied to lots of other funding mechanisms. Prosper ISD, very unique. Our enrollment overall went up during the pandemic. Our special populations overall did not. There, we did struggle in some of that, so we did benefit from this. But they didn't tell us if we were going to get the ADA hold harmless until just two weeks ago. And so we have recorded some of that revenue there with the crystal ball. We didn't know that was even a thing when we started school last year and did the budget. So I do always like to tell the board at this time of year, we have very favorable outcome compared to budget, but don't expect that next year. I know this is the second year I've said that.
Yes, yes.
But, you know, we did, we just had a very good outcome. 100.5% complete year-to-date on revenue. We look at tax collections. We're going to see a little bit later, an agenda item for the tax rate adoption. Tax rate compression is, this is a visual representation of what it is intended to do, and it works beautifully. You see the two prior years' tax collections laid on top of one another. And tax compression is perfectly adjusting that so that the tax collections overlay. And that's the, the point of compression is to do just this. Current year, collections as a percent of levy, 100.21%. It was 104% last year, but the certified values were very difficult for the appraisal districts to get the timing right. And so that's why last year, that percent was so much higher. If we look at our, our ag rollback collection here today, $2.1 million since September. And heading into expenditures, this is the general fund only. We've expended $187 million year-to-date. One of the things to note on this one is that if you look at the incremental expenditure from month to month, from July to August, it increases significantly. That's our payroll accrual to get ready for audit. So we have, since we start, we end the school year, August 31st is our fiscal year. The school year starts in the middle of August. So all the wages that are earned but not paid have to be accrued back. And so our expenses really for next year do reflect a little bit in this school year. So percent increase, 26.4%. And the one thing too, to talk about is we grow so much from year to year because of our enrollment growth. The accrual gets bigger and more heavy each year as well. So that's proportional. Year-to-date expenditures by major object. If we look at our budgeted expenditures, 196. Year-to-date, 187 million. That's a very favorable outcome compared to budget. Percent complete for the year is 95.5%. So that is a very sound performance on budget to actuals. Typically, we will see about 2.7 to 3.5% of your budget unexpended just because of natural ebb and flow typically in payroll. So this is a little higher. We did budget a little bit more last year for unintended consequences just because we were in a very uncertain time. So our results of operations for last year, meaning our revenues, actuals minus expenditures, is $1.4 million surplus instead of a deficit. Now, hold that thought. We did have some purchase orders that we weren't able to get received by year end. We know the supply chain is very difficult. About just under $1 million that we're going to have to roll forward purchase orders and take the budget with it. So we really have about one half, half a million dollars that we're projecting right now. That does not include the $12.2 million from last year that we rolled over to, at transfer out of fund balance. Sorry to be so complicated, but the budget deficit last year was 13 million. We have almost a balanced budget this year, not counting our one-time use. So that is just a very exciting outcome for last year. If we look at our athletics fund, $123,000 results of operations through year end. Child nutrition, this is interim. I do want to point that out. We did not have a bill in July, so we got to skip a monthly bill. So right now, it looks like our net cash flow for the year is going to be just under $1 million. So that's a very strong recovery for our food service program since we did change providers. Debt service fund, our net cash flow for the year is negative $1.5 million dipping into debt service fund balance on purpose, as designed. One thing, when we look at our tax collection percent on another agenda item, that does show excess debt collections. But if you see, this is really dipping into fund balance. So there's not, the correlation there doesn't really mean excess. It's language that they are required to use. Elementary school number 13, Reeves, we're still chipping away at it. We know it's already open. These is all the retainage that we have that we're paying out. 98.1% expended year-to-date. And on Brian, for POG-only contract, $22.3 million. 2.8% remaining on the contract. And looking at 15, $1.2 million. That one's just getting ramped up. 5% expended year-to-date on the contract. And high school number three, we had no expenses last month. We've already expended $6.4 million, so that is moving right along.
Great.
And that concludes the financial statement.
Thank you, Ms. Fulmer. Any questions on the tax, financial investment tax report?
I don't have any questions, but I would like to just offer, I guess, my appreciation to Ms. Fulmer and her team for the balanced budget. I mean, I understand definite deficits, but I have more of an appreciation for a balanced budget. So thanks for, I guess, sharpening your pencil or upgrading your version of Excel or whatever you did to, to do this. But job well done.
Thank you, sir. There's a lot of hands and a lot of estimates and preparation that goes into the budget. And so I have an amazing team that makes that possible. Thank you.
It's a lot of work. Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments, Drew. We do need a motion to approve that for 10A.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Drew. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Thank you, Deborah. All in favor? Great.
Next up is the financial investment tax report for August.
No, it's the.
Oh, sorry, we just did that. So we're going to the tax. Sorry, let's get to the taxes.
10B?
Yes. Consideration and possible action on certifications of anticipated collection rate and excess debt.
This is an annual routine item that we have. The tax assessor collector certifies your collection rate every year based on your notice of budget and tax rate that we submit every year. It's a, it's a collection percentage based on a one-time snapshot and the debt collections therein. So we just ask for approval of this as presented.
Can we push back that that's not our superintendent anymore?
Yes, I have emailed them asking for, for change of that.
It takes a year to update.
It does take a year to update my taxes?
At the county, the state, it all, it's a year.
Okay, a motion for 10B.
I'll make a motion.
All right, Bill, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kelly. All in favor? Now the tax rate.
Yes, on to the tax rate.
Thank you. So with the tax compression, we have, the Texas Education Agency notifies us what our tax, what our compressed tax rate is every year. TEA does a calculation, and the school districts are compressed based on their appraisal value growth. And also, they have to be within bounds of one another. And so the entire state is compressed in a large group, if you will. So our compressed rate for this year is .9603, 50 cents on the INS rate for overall tax rate of 1.4603. The great news is that's a 3.24 cent decrease from prior year and a 21 cent decrease over the last three years thanks to the legislative compression model. So that's the tax rate that we're asking. And I want to point out too that the, the statement on here is required by law. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. Those statements were not designed for tax rate compression, but it's still important that, that they're as part of this notice.
Ms. Fulmer, if I'm understanding correctly, for the motion, we need to state it as the language that's on here. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
Do you want to make that motion?
Sure. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 1.460300, which is effectively a 6.14% increase in the tax rate.
Is that just because of property values? What is that? What does that mean?
It's an effective rate calculation that is required for the notice. School districts are not required by law to calculate an effective rate. So it's, it's an, it's an artifice that's. So it's, it's an, it's an artifice that's, artifact, I should say, that's just in there. Again, the, the tax code, it was designed for when tax rates are going up and values are going up.
But tax rate is going down.
Yes.
That's what we need to take away. $1.67, $1.56, $1.49, now $1.46.
And if we look, if we were, think to the tax collection chart that we just saw, the overlay from year to year, even by month, it was just very precise. The compression worked beautifully.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion. Any more discussion on that? Questions? All right.
Well, I may mention, and I hope I don't insult anyone's intelligence in the public, but I think for anyone that's new to Texas and doesn't understand that we pay our taxes on property values, that if they get their tax statement and go, wait, they lied, my taxes went up. But it's maybe good to point out to the public that our rate is going down. But again, because we are in a sought-out area, your home value goes up. But we're able to lower the rate so that you don't get quite as much of a hit as otherwise. It's an excellent point. And $1.67 back in 1819 was at the tip-top. That's as far as we could go with taxing. So to see us at $1.46, but you're right, Mystics, and the property values continue to go up, and especially with the movement across the U.S. to here. Home selling for well over asking price only drives that up, so.
That's right. Okay, we had a motion, we had a second. All in favor? Great.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer.
Ms. Farmer, thank you very much. Okay, I think that before we head into executive session, let's have the last two open forum comments. I thank you for your patience. Mr. Pope, I think you are first.
Thank you for the time. It's good to see you all again. Didn't make it last week because we had a personal loss in our family. With two special needs children, it's kind of difficult. It's difficult to get here. It's not as easy as some people think it is. Just wanted to say that.
Mr. Pope, I want to make sure your mic's on.
Hello?
Okay, all right.
Okay. One of the things that I was going to bring out is I read social emotional health strategy. I really liked it, actually. I don't think we sometimes forget to, to thank the district and the board for the work they do. We may not agree on everything, but there's a lot of things that I do agree on. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
And we appreciate you up here. The strategy 2.2. Opportunities to unite staff, students, families, to reinforce traditions, develop a sense of belonging. The other part of the action plan, impact a sense of connection with all PISD students, families, and staff. The reason I say that is because it doesn't matter if we're getting along or not. We may not agree on things, but I think open communication is key, whether you agree or disagree. So the reason I say that is I know Janelle came up here with some issues that not just myself or the PAC, but a lot of people have. And they just want answers, that's all. We want to know if there's a policy in place about changing something on the board and putting something up. I don't even know if it happened. I don't, I have no idea. And that was one of the questions I had, and we all know what I'm referring to, is I don't even know if it happened. So I, I just liked regarding the student that came up a couple of months ago regarding the flags being taken out and other flags being put up. That's who I'm referring to. So I, I mean, I'd love to know if that happened. The other thing that was unique, and I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. We had our first meeting for the PAC, and it was a good outcome. What, what really surprised me is the percentage of people have just recently moved here. It was well over 80%. And the passion that these people had for coming to a great community like Prosper was amazing. But these are the same people that start seeing certain things happening, certain comments being made on social media that alert them. And they're saying, I didn't invest this time and money to come to this great school district, this great town to see the same thing happen that I just left. So they're, they're very important people that are coming into this community. So that's all I really had to say about that. Summary on SB 15, which is virtual. I really appreciate the board not caving beforehand when people are trying to get virtual before this state passed the funding. I mean, I wasn't before, prior to that, I was once the funding was done because you can't have your cake and eat it too. Oops, that's three minutes already? Wow. Okay, well, that, one, one quick thing. I'm very concerned about federal fundings because there's always strings attached. And we're in a great district that doesn't need that money. And I really like to see us not take federal funding.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. Appreciate you waiting for that. Thank you. Mr. Iturino, am I pronouncing that right?
Yes, Iturino.
Iturino. Thank you for your patience.
My neighbor here also would like to present, but she didn't know there was a sign-up sheet.
Okay. Well, I think we'll stick to the sign-up sheet, but please, you've got your three minutes.
Thank you. My first time attending, and first, first thing, I'd like to commend you all on your humility, your leadership, and especially you, sir, you apologize it. Gosh, I'm really impressed with your level of leadership, so I just want you to know that. I'm speaking, my name is Sammy Iturino. I'm speaking on behalf of a bill that was signed by Governor Abbott, HB 547. It's, it's the equal access bill for UIL, for homeschool students. And I'm speaking about it from a unique perspective. I'm a homeschool dad, and I'm also a public education school dad. So I, I've got two and two. We've homeschooled for 10 years, and I understand the value of educational choice, and I respect what parents choose, whether it's private, parochial, public, or homeschool. They have their reasons for choosing that, for choosing each and every one of them. But for the first time, Governor Abbott untied your hands with regard to homeschool participation. He signed a bill in June, giving you the opportunity to allow these homeschool students that represents about, well, before the pandemic, about 4.5% of, of students in Texas who are homeschooled. So if the numbers are true, 21,700, that's about, about 1,000 students in Prosper that are homeschooled. Before the pandemic, I believe the numbers are closer to 12 to 15% now because they're afraid of coming in. But the traditional homeschool is about 4, 4 to 5%. And, and I say it's historic, and, and I, I love a conversation in the future. I know this is just more of a presentation. It's an opportunity to allow kids truly, an inclusive opportunity with their neighbors and friends. And, and I think it's, it's an opportunity for us, you know, when, when we say we are prosper, we are one, to really include all students in that opportunity to participate in the public funding of extracurricular activities. And it's not necessarily, you know, I think what Governor Abbott did is, again, he, he didn't necessarily bring to you, hey, you need to make a decision as to, do you agree with it or not? That's sort of been removed. It's, it's will you allow this, this special opportunity? And I think what it presents is, it presents an opportunity to bring additional talent into UIL opportunities, whether it's sports teams or, again, non-athletic teams. It also, I think the biggest thing is diversity, equity, and inclusion. It allows kids to truly feel a part of the community. It allows them the opportunity to access something that is really special. Participating on a team and on a community is something that most kids will, I mean, even as adults, where we talk about, hey, do you remember when we were little and we did all these things? It really allows them to, to participate in something that's unique and special. I'll end my comments with that. I just want you to know that I love additional conversation on it, and I really would like for you to consider the importance of it.
Thank you very much for my speakers, and thanks to all. Thank you, thank you, and thank you to all of our speakers tonight. Thank you very much. With that, I think we need a motion to move into executive session.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Bill, second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Drew. All in favor? We will discuss our executive session stuff. We will come back out to conduct the business that comes out of executive session. You're welcome to stick around for that if you would like. Thank you.
It is 9:44. We will be back in session. Our first motion is 12A, consideration and possible action on approval of any professional contract personnel to be employed. Status of current professional personnel. Can I get a motion to approve the new hires?
I'll make a motion to approve the new hires.
Kelly, second bill, all in favor? Consideration and possible action on approval of resignations received.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Jana, second. I think we'll give Dina. All in favor? And then somebody has another motion.
Yes, I move that the board find that Tim Martin did not have good cause to abandon his contract.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Great. That is it, yeah, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Drew and Bill, all in favor? All right, good night.
Good night. Thank you all.
Good night.